Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
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 Looks like the storm's not that bad here.
It's not that bad.
They said it's gonna be bad out here. But after here, they said it's gonna be good. Ann Arbor and up north.
It's a little over here.
Sixty miles an hour. That's on that one. Do you like this song?
So sorry. You're good.
Maybe you should.
Yeah. Thanks.
I just seen you like a couple hours ago. What are you talking about?
These guys, it's good. It's not too bad.
Bobby, I'm here. Five dollars. Five dollars? That too much. I put it in the piggy bank.
Oh, okay. Well, piggy has to be something, right? How you doing today?
Doing all right. How about you?
Ah, I'm all right. Hopefully we might get out. Ain't gonna be raining. I just had that weather report. Storms coming up.
Oh, yeah? It's nasty out in Ann Arbor today.
Yeah. Hey, I'm at council meetings and I got non-silenced. Yeah, I'll probably get out at any time. But it's supposed to storms, you know? So I gotta take me home and not get flooded. He's still in here. I think it's a very kind of message.
Second.
What's your crowd? It's a man over there. Aw, I'm sorry. I'll miss you. All right, how we?
This is Vippi. There he is.
Vippi as usual. How you doing today, sir? All right.
One, two, three, test.
You looking good today?
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular scheduled Melvadale Council meeting. It is Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Oh, sorry. June eighteenth, twenty twenty five to order. Can I have the roll call, please? Jackson.
Here.
Avoli.
Here.
Lasting.
Here.
Filibowski.
Here.
Parker. Parker.
Here.
Uh, Scott, Robert is being asked to work tonight. Can we all sample the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, this past weekend. Is that what it was? Is that last? Last week at Melvadale? So two weeks ago. All right. So two weeks ago, um, at Melvadale Gates, we had, um, French Town Cert team come and assist us, uh, keeping order and making sure everything ran smoothly. Um, so I wanted to give them recognition with a certification or certificate of appreciation. So when I come down in front, when I call your name, come forward. All right. So Eric Landt.
He had to work.
He had to work. Okay. So he wasn't going to have to work. And then, is it Tim Rehan?
Yeah.
All right. Stay up here because I'm gonna take a picture. And then I have, uh, Angie Jennings.
Yep.
Can I get somebody? Please take a picture?
One more.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Take the staff or him. Thank you so much. Okay. No Deputy Chief? Do you want to call him?
He's on it, chief.
He's not here.
It was very nice of French Town to do that.
Yeah. We truly appreciate your help.
Yeah. Beautiful. Beautiful.
Is that there? All right. I'll have him read this and I'll thank you to present it out. All right. So this is a certificate of appreciation for our Deputy Chief Martinez for his outstanding leadership and dedication and every effort as our Deputy Chief. So I wrote this letter to Deputy Chief, um, to extend my heartfelt appreciation. Dear Deputy Chief Martinez, I would like to extend my deepest appreciation for your outstanding leadership and dedication during the recent period of time while Chief was receiving treatment. Your commitment to ensuring the continued safety, efficiency, and professionalism of our department did not go unnoticed. You stepped into a critical role with confidence and integrity, consistently going on but oh beyond to support your team and the bordering communities. Your ability to lead by example, manage duty operations, while addressing the challenges and opposition with a steady hand is a testament to your experience, work ethic, and character. Thank you for your hard work, your reliability, and your unwavering support. We, as a city, are very fortunate to have a leader of your caliber on our team. So that is for him. If you could pass that along. Huh?
You gotta say again? Wait. This is a good enjoyment, man. Everybody smiling. Good to see you tonight.
All right.
I don't know if I believe you. All right. I'm gonna give this to you. We're moving on. I feel like I already heard leaked. Would you like it?
Yeah.
So I'll let you read this. I read it for everybody. Um, but this is just a letter or a certificate of appreciation um, for stepping into the role while Chief was gone. I think you did an exceptional job with everything that you had to do. So I truly appreciate it.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes dated June fourth. Moved by Jackson, supported by Filibowski. Any discussion? We have a couple. For the chair.
For the chair.
Thank you.
I have a couple changes.
The floor recognizes Don Perkins.
I have a couple changes. But on the, uh, second page regarding things, um, selling the vehicles to, selling the vehicles to Wayne County.
If I could, Chief. That's Resolution twenty-five zero-six-one-nine-eight.
Yes, twenty-five zero-six-one-nine-eight. That should read the sale of three used vehicles. And then I have one more. On page three, Resolution twenty-five oh-six-two oh-two. Um, this should, they approve the cost of special events at the field, the field house rental. They should say that it's for the rental of the little house.
Anything else? All right. Any other discussion? Same time, call the both.
Jackson.
Yes.
Avoli.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Filibowski.
Yes.
And Parker.
Yes.
All right. Um, communications from the Department of Public Safety and City.
Good evening.
Anything?
Before I start, um, adjust the audience real quick.
Sure.
Hey. Good evening, everybody. Um, so we're at another public meeting. Uh, we're gonna keep everything cordial. Everything's gonna be respectful. There really no albers. This is gonna be, uh, your one warning. It will not be tolerated if we get to the point of disrespecting city council members or other audience participation. This warning doesn't only go to you guys, but it also goes to the city council members. Um, so let's try to keep this peaceful. Let's try to keep this cordial and be respectful with one another. Okay? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, one thing I have, a couple things. One is the Power DMS that I brought up in the last meeting. Um, there was asked, there are one year and two year. Uh, I got that explained. Sorry. The first year is from seven-one to eight-eighteen of twenty twenty-five. So that's what the cost of this program would be. Um, the second portion of four thousand three hundred sixty-seven twenty, that's from eight-nineteen twenty twenty-five to eight-eighteen twenty twenty-six. And we have Power DMS for, um, the policies. And so the second year, they correlated to that with the Power DMS that we already have. So it's not two separate, um, months. It all correlates with the same months as the prior Power DMS that we currently have in use. So that's, that's basically what it is for, uh, the subscription, which is reoccurring, is the four hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents. The setup is the three thousand two hundred forty-four fifty. So that's what it comes down to. So the, for the second year of four thousand three hundred sixty-seven twenty, that is for the employee license base and also, uh, the, the price of a Power DMS subscription for, um, the scheduling that I talked about before. So I'd like to get a resolution if we can get this passed.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Filibowski. I need a second question. The chair recognizes Sam Filibowski.
So Chief, just, just to clarify what I'm looking at. So the thirty-seven, thirty-six is for setup and subscription for until twenty twenty-five of Oklahoma.
Correct.
And then the next year, uh, from eight-nineteen twenty-five to eight-eighteen twenty-six, that's the yearly subscription. Is that gonna be, if they're gonna, like, for twenty twenty-seven, should be around the same price as the four thousand again, running around?
Yeah, approximately depending on what their, their increase is. But that's where it's gonna be for, um, for eight-nineteen twenty-five to eight-eighteen twenty twenty-six. For the next year, that's what it will be. Um, they don't have these prices for the following years. And so, you know, whatever they decide at that point, we can bring it back and go that route once, you know, when it might have exactly what it's gonna be.
So can this eight, eight thousand, one hundred and three fifty-six is actually for this year plus all the way to next year, all the way to twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay. Just a grand total of what it is.
Yes. The floor recognizes Wheeler Mercy.
Um, so reoccurring after we, we go into submission, the eight thousand dollars. Um, every year then where we occur, they give them the four ninety-one. Is that annually? And then also the four thirty-six, or four thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six? That'll be reoccurring, or you say that, that could go up when it goes back to where that was twenty twenty-six?
So this, this price is good until eight-eighteen twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Okay. And then from there, you know, they'll, they'll give me another quote. And that's where I'll come up from that one as well.
Okay. All right.
You through the chair?
Yes.
All right. I, I looked at the system. You might wanna tell me what the system's about. It looks really good for, for communications and part of it. Do you want to add right there, Mr. Mercy?
It, it, the body, so chooses to actually tell you both. Um, so, so the first approval that you guys did for me, which I appreciate it, is, um, has to do with the policy. Okay? So, you know, before with the policies, everything is paper driven. And that's exactly, so if I had to redo a policy, basically what would happen is, um, we would take the old copy and it would be hopefully filed in a cabinet. And so if we needed to get to it, then we have to go to that cabinet. With the way it is now, everything is centralized. So the way that they can use computers, they can use their cell phone to access Power DMS. So anytime that I make a change, which is word document created, so what they did is they, uh, uploaded all of the policies and procedures that we currently have. If I wanted to make a change to that policy and procedure, it's simply, I go in there, I open that up, I click edit, I change what I need to change. The system will automatically archive that policy and procedure um, to where if we need to get back to it, everything is centralized. Where if we need to archive five years ago, all we gotta do is go to Power DMS and there it is. Um, so it's, it's streamlined. That's the reason why I'm trying to go to this, to where we get into the twenty-first century to where instead of having everything be paper, uh, driven, we're actually centralized. The thing that's good with that is any document that I create, it automatically gets sent out to every police officer that I have employed. Um, when they open it up, it will generate a signature page. So instead of me having to create a signature page and make sure that, you know, the supervisors do their job and have everybody sign it, it's already there. Again, I don't have to go look for that policy and procedure signature page showing. Uh, if I have to do disciplines violating the policy, I don't have to go look for that signature page saying, remember you signed this? It's all centralized. I can go right to Power DMS, pull it up, print it off and say, here's your signature. You know, you violated this. You, you recognized that you read it. I got your signature. So there's accountability for that. That's the reason why I did that. When you have this one, this one here is for, um, scheduling. So when we go to twelve-hour shifts and we go to eight-hour shifts, when we do shift pick or shifted, just like we did now, I have to print off the legal size paper with a twenty, um, month on it for four months. Then everybody's gotta go in there, put the RVs, what shift that they wanna pick and everything else. Well, again, that gets stored away in the cabinet and hopefully, you know, ten years ago, good luck trying to find that because it would be down in the basement somewhere. And then we have to try to locate and find it, which is not cost effective and it's spend a lot of time with one of the officers going down there to try to find it. This, again, is, is all centralized. Everything is automatically generated. They would be sent, uh, an email saying it's that time of season again for you to do your shift picks. So they can put what shift picks they want. We get all that information and then we'd be able to input it into, um, the schedule and we're only printing out one copy. Because then, again, the schedule is accessible by computer, by phone. So they'd be able to say, well, what day did I have off? Or, you know, do I have to come into work today? They can look on their phone and see everything. So that's, that's where this is kinda something that, that we need, um, to be, uh, in an accredited agency, this is the first step. Um, all the accredited agencies go through, uh, Power DMS. It's a requirement to be accredited. So, um, and, and that's the reason why, is because everything's mainstreamed to where even I can go in there and do a query report to break down, you know, who's been off, who's been sick, who's been whatever. I can request the report to see if there is, um, maybe something that is, um, habitual. You know, they've called in sick numerous times and it seems like every, they have Saturday assembly out and every Friday or Monday, they're taking a sick day. Well, showing that they're abusing the system, it's easy to, to query your reports to, again, hold, um, employees accountable. So it's difficult with holding employees accountable, but it also makes the supervisors' job easier to, to create a new schedule. So that's why, um, I'm bringing this to the body and why the importance of having this is necessary. And if, is there any questions or is it feeling pretty good?
Through the chair.
Yes. The floor recognizes Sam Filibowski.
So who has the, uh, who's the author in charge of the system, like, for policies and entering and stuff like that?
Um, that would be, we have the patrol lieutenant, Deputy Chief, and myself. So, you know, obviously I'm in control of all of the policies and procedures. So if any changes that I need to make, I'll be able to make. Um, they can oversee that as well. So in my absence, you know, Deputy Chief needed to fine tune, um, a policy and procedure, you'd be able to have access to make that. you'd be able to have access to make that as well.
You, you have a hundred thousand policies. I don't know where you can scan in and source them.
Yeah, that's, that's where, you know, when you're looking at the, the setup costs, that's what that's all about.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't wanna give you the details, but.
Yeah, I just.
So for, for scheduling, they're gonna wanna know what our, what our schedule is, how many officers do we have, are we on eight hour shifts? What is the eight hour shift? Is it eight to four, four to midnight, so forth? When we get to twelve hour shifts, they're gonna wanna know the exact same thing. So we give them all the information. Like I gave them the, I don't know, a hundred and seventy, two hundred plus policies and procedures we had. I gave them all of that. They downloaded it, they put it all on there, they set it up. Um, they helped me set up the user preferences. So as a supervisor, um, you can go in there and assign people, um, user accounts. So I mean, that, that's where it is pretty in depth. Uh, that's why I said, you know, that I'm about sixty percent complete. It's, it's, it's a long process to critique every little thing. But once it's finalized and you're at a hundred percent, it's like awkward. It, it would be phenomenal.
Any other discussion? Singan Holbock?
Jackson?
Yes.
Abu Ali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Philip Hocksky?
Yes.
And Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. So the other thing, um, I know we've been talking about civil service and we have an employee, Yasan, that has been hired. Um, it's worth the understanding that Yasan was hired after the motion was made. Um, I'm here to correct that. So under the minutes, five twenty one twenty five is when it was moved by Marcy, supported by Jackson, Korean State Civil Service Commission for all full-time employees hired by the city of Melvindale. That's when it was. We started the background, uh, the waiver and authorization, the release of information on three thirteen twenty twenty five. That's when it started. Okay, so it took a few months, once we were able to get through everything. Uh, he was on five seven, he was sent a letter for a conditional offer of employment. At that point in time, he becomes a city employee. Okay, so he's being told you have a job for the city of Melvindale. So the reason that uh, this was sent to him five seven, he signed it on five nine. And his effective start date, it was June first, since he wanted to get his two weeks notice and have a little bit of time off from his employer that he had. So with that being said, he was hired prior to the motion on five twenty one twenty five. So for him to be denied case paid, that's, that's shouldn't, shouldn't happen and should not have happened. Um, again, if there is a question about that, if I go and go, if I got news, come talk to me. This could have been handled outside of city council. No reason to have to address this now when this could have been addressed by giving me a phone call or coming to my office. Um, so that's where I would uh, hope that this is taken care of.
Through the chair.
Who's that?
Um, that's where it was advised that the, that the city attorney had sent this to payroll. Just to, to show.
The, the payroll.
Go ahead.
Payroll's put in this week. So they've even paid part of this week?
He's been on the job, um, I don't know if he's been paid or not. This is something that I was given today, it was payday. I'm not sure if it had this, but I wanted to clarify his start date.
So you was telling me his start date was on five twenty one?
Five seven.
Yeah, his, his start date, we gave him the conditional offer on five seven. His start date was June first. So he was given employment, a notice of employment, five seven.
So this is his first paper that he put in?
Correct. So that's where, again, it's, it's something that could have been handled. Just come talk to me. I don't wanna, I'm not here to ruffle feathers. I'm here to make this job work and, and have the, the officers that we need and make sure that they're taken care of. So then the union doesn't have to file all sorts of stuff, the E O P and grievances. And I don't wanna go that route. I rather.
Payroll department contacted me and said, there's a new employee. And that was this paper. And I sent to him, the public state, the city council said, yeah, the City Service Commission, which is true.
Correct. And that's the one.
So I was just concerned how he just got on the payroll, uh, June though?
June first is when he started, June fourth is when he was sworn in. But he was um, started the process on three, three thirty, three thirteen. He was given a conditional offer of employment on five seven, which he signed five nine, for a start date as June first.
Was that information provided to the payroll department?
I'm sorry?
Was that information provided to the payroll department? Because that was not discussed with the payroll department myself. They said there's a new employee. They didn't say he was hired prior to that. Now, then I just said that based on the council resolution, we started in civil service. We should go for civil service. So that's it.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
Was that information given to the payroll department when he started?
Yeah, yeah, we did give him that. Also, when he's sworn in, we also give a copy of that as well. Um, so yeah, they, they are well aware of it. Uh, payroll was, did we give payroll, the three thirteen of when we started? No. Um, so yeah, they, they should have been given his start date of June first.
That was not conveyed to me.
Okay. And that, that's where we're good. And that, that's why I'm not making a, a huge reveal about it. I just, I'm just bringing it up so then we can keep a resolve. Um, next thing is, is I know we had met last week in regards to civil service and the requirements. Still trying to figure out exactly what we do. Um, I did pull out the civil service, uh, rules of the civil service commission. Um, requirements for police officers, all police officers, they all need to follow requirements of employment standards. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of it because it's basically minimum age twenty one. His qualifying guidelines is OWI. All the stuff within the past five years, which is common knowledge for the police department. At the time of hire, they have to assess, successfully complete post-op, off the offer physical, psychiatric, and a psychologist, that's how it lives, it will stand, what they do. Um, so the hiring process for the police department, we get an applicant. We have to give them an interview. I don't have a choice when it comes to full-time. I have to give them an interview, otherwise they can sue um, on fear hiring practice. So every applicant that comes in, we do an interview with. It's a two-pronged interview. Here's the first one, that's done by myself and um, two lieutenants, or deputy chief, no lieutenant. If it's not with me, then it'll be the two lieutenants and deputy chief. After that, then they have another interview that we don't communicate. While they're going through the second interview, we're scoring the first interview. So the, the interviewees are scoring the first interview. So we're not communicating with the second interview, what the test scores were. They're also doing the same thing. So why, when the second interview's done, then they have to fill out a, we give them a nice big final scenario, or we give them some sort of scenario. They have to do a mock police report. That way we can say, hey, if they know the laws or, you know, any aspects of the police job, reading, grammar, writing, you know, so we test on that as well. When the second interview's done, uh, like I said, we hear that, they're scoring them at that time. When they get done and we're done, they would collect both score of interviews and we, we combine the scores together and we come up with a final score. That's the process, that's what we do. At that point, um, the people that get below seventy, thank you for your time, you know, have a good day. They're done. People at four seventy or above are given just like the same thing. They get an in-cold waiver form because that's what's required for us to do a background dump. So the waiver authorization, this is generated by in-colds. It's state regulated. We have to do this in order to start a background dump. So they fill this out, they sign it. That gives us the authority and the power to check and print them and do a background dump. Um, when that's completed, as long as they are ethically good, they haven't had any, you know, five points on their record, they haven't had an OWI, they're not a felon, they haven't had a lot of police contact, they haven't been arrested. Um, we go through a pretty extensive background. So we're checking court systems, we're checking their credit history, we're checking other department agencies to make sure that there's no police contact. If there is, then we send a letter to that, that agency and say, what were they in trouble for? Can you send us a report so we have it? Very extensive, like I said. Um, the background, again, is from in-colds. So the recruit or, or the candidate has to go on to the in-cold website and they have to fill out the, I don't even know what it is. Ours was thirty-two pages, theirs, I think, is even more, that they have to fill up. It has to be done online. Uh, we went back ten years, they go back fifteen years. So, and again, that's state regulated through in-colds. We don't have a choice. If we don't submit their background, they're DQ. That's a requirement for me to give to in-colds for them to even be hired. And that's why I'm saying in-cold regulates, uh, we, we have to give them this, we have to give them the background. There's a lot of steps that we have to take. If it's free academy, then they have to do their reading, writing and their physical agility. Again, they have to get seventy percent on their reading and writing. They have A, B and C band. C is the lowest one that you can get, and that's seventy or above. If it's below that, you fail, you have to take it over again. Um, same thing with the agility. You have to score so many setups, push-ups, jump, you know, vertical jump. Um, you have to do a run and, and a lot amount of time. If you don't meet those requirements that's set by in-colds, you fail. Then you have to redo the test. Um, so then we get to the academy part. Um, every month, the director gives them a test on what they learned for that month. At the end of the academy, sixteen weeks, they have a two hundred question test that they have to pass that's set by the director. Then you have an in-cold proctor that comes in and gives the in-cold test. If you don't get seventy percent or above on the in-cold test, then you fail. And you have one more chance to take the test. If you fail it a second time, then you have to take the academy exam. That's it, two and done. So it's an extensive amount of time and effort that we put in. Obviously, three thirteen and June first is when he gets hired. It's, it's, it isn't something that we take for granted because it's all regulated by in-colds. These are requirements that are set by in-colds. So um, and that, once you get through all the things that are required from us, then um, if you look at the requirements for clerk applicants, if you look at, at BPW, they have must pass written or, or a physical examination. Uh, same thing with BPW must pass written or, or a physical examination. At no point in time does the description for the police department or police officer hiring process state that you have to take a test. Not in there at all. So then we go to uh, section four, oral interviews. Section five is for police firing exam. Step one, police officer candidates will be subject to an oral interview as listed on rule four, section four. Uh, rule four, section four, um, oral interviews shall be conducted by a panel of three individuals from their respective departments within the city of Melvindale. The three individuals on the panel shall present at all, shall be uh, present at all interviews. Oral board interviews for BPW clerk positions shall be conducted by a panel of three individuals from Melvindale Civil Service Commission. Of course, on the department head group, which the interviews are being conducted, the four individuals on the panel shall be present at all interviews. Um, for police officer examination, it says step one, police officer candidates shall go on listed on rule four. Step two, police officer candidates will be subject to an oral interview with the chief of police in the department, patrol, administrative lieutenant and detective. The first and second interview will be scored separately. The total of the first and second interview will then be added and divided by two to reach a final score. That's what we currently do. So um, past that point, that's where we're starting to get into uh, the fire department to where they're saying that in lieu of any examination, any formal requirements for the fire fighter, may at their discretion utilize the services standards adopted by Michigan Fire Bureau Training Council. That's what we do with in-colds. Same thing. We are using their tests and for their proctors to score them on their physical agility, reading and writing. We meet the standards. So I don't know what the confusion is, I don't know what the problem is. I've come to this body several times saying, show me an exam, and yet there's nothing for you. So I'm reading to you word by word from the civil service exam or civil service and what it states. And here the police and fire, there's nothing listed stating that there is something for the police department to take and examine.
Through the chair.
The floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
You have, you have copies for us for that?
Well, definitely, I think I checked on through one, but yeah, I can definitely get you one. Um, or do you have one right now?
No, I'm sorry, through the chair, this is the charter.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The charter clearly states that hiring for the police department has to go through civil service. So that's it. That's the end of the discussion. The charter says it and that's the way we have to do it.
And that's where, I understand that, but we are following what the civil service commission.
But the civil service commission has to do it, not your department.
That's not what this says. It plainly states that. And then there's also um, the commission still not used, has their examinations that have an adverse.
Okay, now, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're not gonna discuss this here. Um, obviously, there needs to be this discussion. Maybe we need to have a workshop about this. Um, I know that you've talked to Ryan, who is the chair. You have to chair the secretary for um, the civil service. And you also talked with the members of civil service and they agree that what you're doing is correct. So um, if, if this body would like, we can have a workshop and discuss it, but we're not gonna discuss it here. Okay?
All right, that's uh, all I have to announce.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair?
Yes, the floor recognizes Salim Abu Ali.
Can we schedule a workshop for this?
Can I do it right now? Sure can.
Can I, can I say, uh, Monday at three thirty? And I told Ryan about this, uh, the civil service meeting at three thirty. Just to let you get through.
Monday, the twenty third?
Yes.
All right. At three thirty?
Yes.
Will they have a forum?
Yes, yes, yes. They said this time.
Will everybody be available Monday, the twenty third at three thirty?
I can try.
Okay. We'll schedule it for Monday, the twenty third at three thirty. Hold on one second, please. All right, the floor recognizes Wheeler Marcy.
I'll bring the doctors.
I'll bring the doctors.
Not necessary, but okay. All right, we got public safety fire chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Captain Rogers, City Attorney, first management for Department, left a report. Here we have the fire chief, and I'd like to send that to your report.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, Public Works and Water Director.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good to hear from Tennessee Engineers. Now, we've got a couple of motions that we're going to need to do, I'll let you explain that to you. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilor. My name's Nick Yuvan from Tennessee Engineers. The first item I had on the agenda was for the Allen Road Water Main Project, we've been working on trying to find a staging and stockpile area for the contractors, and we've discussed a few locations, and when we originally held a pre-construction meeting for this project, we had an original start date of April, so the fieldhouse gravel area was off the table at the time because of Melvindale days. We've had some delays because of permitting, and we feel that that fieldhouse, the eastern most side of the parcel would be a great spot to use as a stockpile staging. It's right at the north end of the project, it gives them plenty of room, and it's, it's kind of tucked out of the way there. So I'd like to ask for a motion to allow inner-city contracting to use the eastern gravel area of the fieldhouse parcel for a stockpile area for the Allen Road Water Main Project.
So moved, support.
Moved by Mercy, supported by Filipowski, any discussion?
Through the chair. This is kind of what they, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Floor recognizes Dan Filipowski.
This is kind of the same thing we did last year, right?
Yeah.
We used to have a party before. And they're gonna clean up, just like they did.
Yes, they have to restore it to new or better, they've already been told, they'll have to bring in some rocks, grade it out, make it look nice before they leave, and majority of that stockpile, I'd say probably ninety-seven percent goes in within the first few months. They run the main line first, which is all the big pulpy pipe, and then come back into the services, so I wouldn't anticipate it being too long, but right now, the end of project is December of this year, so I would say before the end of summer, hopefully, maybe in the fall, we could take that move south to the other areas if it becomes an issue.
Any other discussion? Singnan, call it. Jackson.
Yes.
Abuwali.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Filipowski.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Another motion, MCO's to the Robert Street Project.
And you've been here a couple of times on the Robert Street Project, but just to give a little background, we've been working with the city of Melvindale and a developer called Yapo Construction to redevelop, they purchased the, I think it was the old Evans School, middle school high school, and then it was on, I think, a vein residence for a bit, that's my purchase. We've worked with them, they've beaded the right-of-way back to the city, and so now the city owns that right-of-way. So we prepared plans to extend Robert Street to eliminate both of the dead ends, to go from the dead end south of Martell to the curb on Robert Street just north of the Luthis Street. Yapo Construction has agreed to develop this area as single-family housing in exchange for Melvindale constructing this road. So we, we prepared the plans, we've reached out to GB Cement Contracting, the city's annual cement contractor, we had them put together a quote, and all these numbers are based on their annual contracted, these have been bid out before, the city reviews them every year, so we, we feel like these are a really good number for this project. Their quote was two hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-four. And so the motion I would be asking for is a motion to award the contract for the Robert Street Extension Project to GB Cement Contracting in the amount of three hundred and two thousand dollars, which includes a six percent contingency.
So moved, support.
You have.
I'll read the motion.
And it was supported by Abuwali. Any discussion?
Just wanted to let Council know, understand that that price also includes, you know, they gotta extend the water line, there's a storm sewer, so there's a lot of infrastructure out of that cost, not just, it's not just concrete there.
And that, that's correct, there's.
Water lines to each section, tabs, abscences, there's a lot of infrastructure.
Hold on one second, I do have a question. What are they gonna do with the, where Robert curves onto Harmon? Are they gonna keep that a street, or are they gonna make that a field?
The plan right now is to keep it a street.
Okay.
There is a marathon gas line system running through there, and my recommendation would be keep that if, if at all possible, because once you get rid of that road, it, it becomes really difficult to put it back if the city ever decides to put it back. There's a lot of additional permitting and Marathon's got a big pipeline running through there, so at, at this time, it, it would just kind of tee off of there, that, that then would kind of come up and do a tee like this and go into the, into the development on Robert Street.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Through the chair. Yes, the floor recognizes Dr..
This, your three hundred and two thousand dollars is for everything, tarot, replacement, green, everything.
Everything, the road, the water services up to, to the roadway line. I, I should mention, though, it does, it does not include sidewalk, and it doesn't include driveway. The developer is still adjusting those slightly, and what we don't want to do is put the cuts in the curb, and then they'll have to come back and patch it or move them. So that cost, I believe, should be on the developer when they put their driveway in. They would also install the sidewalk there also, because at each driveway, you have a thicker section of sidewalk, it goes up to six inches rather than four, and we don't want to guess at where you put the thick, and it would be a waste of money to put thicker sidewalk the whole way through, so.
Okay, thank you. So this is like the complete breakdown?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Singnan, call it. Jackson.
Yes.
Abuwali.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Filipowski.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Building Official, building department.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to mention that site is set for. I got a couple of things on the agenda of the council or the planning commission, excuse me, not last Wednesday. First one, we really don't need to vote on, that was a one-eight-six-two-one Allen Road. Planning Commission didn't accept the site plan, I understand that they're going to try to re-prepare a new site plan and possibly go to the meeting next, next month for that. So the second one, we have looking for a motion to concur with the Planning Commission, PC two-five-one-seven, to approve the site plan application for the installation of an interchangeable LED sign at thirty-seven forty-one Polwood.
So moved, support.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Abuwali, any discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes, the floor recognizes Dan Filipowski.
And Jack, where is that?
This is at the Town Makery, the Middle Eastern. Oh.
Through the chair. Yes, the floor recognizes Dr..
Is this going to replace their existing sign, or is it going to be below it, or size is, how bright is it gonna be?
Yeah, we have a lot of restrictions and ordinances pressed on the lumens and the brightness on the sign, that we have to put in place on these, we wish you to permit, that that can't be flashing, it can't be a nuisance to traffic, things like that, because these L E signs can get a little overbearing when they're driving down the road, so we have that in place. This is going underneath the existing sign? That's the original, they had one that was kind of a.
And like the McDonald's where they can change what it says, what they're special and stuff, so not, not something huge and flashy and bright?
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, the floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
I just gotta say, since we're talking about the best man in the business.
Councilman Kachet, I believe this sign is being replaced, it's not any bigger than the existing sign that's there, but there, it is a whole remodel of the existing sign incorporated.
It's not being, it's not being replaced, the LED is going below.
Yeah, okay.
The, the box, and the LED will go underneath.
Okay, that helps, that, yeah. I think they had different, different, different designs that they put through, so.
Through the chair.
Yes, the floor recognizes, how to explain Abuwali.
So it's, it's about the same size, they're setting a little screen.
Right.
Of, of the current sign, that's all it is.
Yeah, we reviewed it, we don't see any problems with it for that site.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
We try to support the, this is all we can.
Any other discussion? Singnan, call it. Jackson.
Yes.
Abuwali.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Filipowski.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then we have a home on one-seven-three-six-nine Harmon, a little background, and this is still being managed, this home bad for income taxes. It was vacant for many years. We consider a light property, there's some foundation issues, the property was opened up with a roof and a side, so it has some mold and migration issues, has infestation and some rodents in there. So we're looking for city council resolution to start the demolition process for one-seven-one-six-nine Harmon.
So moved, support.
Moved by Mercy, supported by Filipowski, any discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes, hold on.
You gonna have the bid specs?
Yeah, we're gonna put, we're gonna pair some bid specs with some environmental, get some costs together and put that out for bid, having used multiple different demolition contractors in the city, and if we have that, we'll come back and we'll buy it for approval for the place.
All right.
And Rich is working on setting, setting aside some funds, apparently we might have some grant funds that will come off this one, of course, we gotta come up with a process.
Through the chair.
Yes, the floor recognizes Abuwali.
We can't sell it as is, we're investors, demolish it themselves.
We're, we might look at that, too.
Because it's a shitty process.
We could look at that, too. We are, we are in the process of looking at that, too.
Any other discussion? Singnan, call it. Jackson.
Yes.
Abuwali.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Filipowski.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
All right, so, real quick, the first planning resolution was to remove and replace Ekram Kaban and Lufban Kaban for multiple unexcused absences. That's what the first.
Oh, okay, I don't have that in my, in my bag.
So, Planning Commission was looking for council to concur with the removal or replace of two members.
Okay.
For multiple unexcused absences. I know at the last Planning Commission meeting, we tried reaching out to them, and neither one of them were answering their phone, and so, it was more than three, it was four, I thought, it was four consecutive unexcused absences, and so, planning is looking for a motion to concur.
So moved, support.
Moved by Mercy, supported by Filipowski, any discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I, was a letter sent to them after missing the second meeting, the second consecutive meeting, the ordinance states that a letter has to be sent to them.
I would have to free the man. Contact on the chair.
And I know.
Let them know that they've missed two, and require them to be the third, but it's
the state that it needs to be mailed to them.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with the chair, and I'll have them put this on the next agenda. I don't either, I just know that they have not gone to multiple meetings, and they haven't been able to contact them, so they wanted to remove or replace. So whoever makes the motion needs to resend.
Certainly.
Thank you, I appreciate you. All right, Field House Director is not here, City Administrator, Finance Director.
Good evening, we have a couple items. We are going to upgrade, I know we have telephone systems coming in still, our alarm system is also needed as well. They are going to be installing something at the DPA building, they don't have an alarm, so I asked them to take it with the other facilities, which are the DPW yard, field house, and city hall here. So, I am requesting a motion to approve these upgrades from Y dot alarm. The DPW yard security system is a one-time payment of twelve hundred with a sixty-five dollar monthly fee. The city hall alarm is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the one-time installment fee with, again, sixty-five dollars a month, fee subscription monitoring. And finally, the testy fieldhouse, this one-time installation investment fee is twenty-four hundred dollars, two thousand four hundred, and that monthly monitoring service fee would be eighty-nine dollars a month.
So moved, support.
Who made the motion?
I.
And who's supporting?
Joe.
Moved by Filipowski, supported by Jackson, any discussion? Through the chair. Yes, the floor recognizes Dr.. Rich, do we already have, is Y dot alarm already our alarm company and works with upgrading the system?
Yes, they are our alarm system company, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna get a new box in here, all electronic, or they can do it from their facility, so Y dot alarm is our current vendor. I do know here at this building, we, they already contested this, we've run out of space for people to use it, and I'm a hobo, so they're gonna upgrade these three buildings as the same vendor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Singnan, call it. Jackson.
Yes.
Abuwali.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Filipowski.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Then the other item is, I'm requesting a motion for the payout to Jan Shunuda in the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So moved, support.
Moved by Mercy, supported by Filipowski, any discussion?
Yes. Through the chair.
The floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
It's my understanding that Mr. Shunuda wasn't MCO certified, so why are we paying him?
Can you hear my answer?
Yes.
So, Mr. Shunuda was hired through, hired through Melvindale Department, we were waiting for MCOs to approve his license, his license wasn't approved, probably had.
Through the chair. Yes, the floor recognizes Dr.. Wasn't he on the payroll for six months?
Yes, he was.
Okay, well, didn't you just tell us that they needed to be MCO certified before they get hired? So how, I guess my question is, how and why was he hired without being certified, and then put on the payroll and paid us a police officer, but he wasn't eligible to be one?
Because, again, this is how it works. Whenever you leave, our, our background didn't show anything that was ethically wrong with him, there wasn't anything that, that showed that he wasn't a good candidate, again, that's through MCOs. So, he was red flagged with policy violations from there, and there's a couple incidents, a couple things that he had, where we had sent everything to MCOs, went to red flag where it'd be as simple as you not making the FTO program, you'd have to be red flagged. So we hire with anticipation that he's going to pass, so that's, that's something that's done quite often. So, we're not the only city that hires somebody with red flags awaiting. So, uh, we're not the only city that hires somebody with red flag, um, awaiting for that. So, we talked to ECO, they told us that, that he no longer was eligible for his license, therefore he was removed.
Chair?
Yes, floor recognizes Stan Filipowski.
So it took him like six months to finally figure this out?
There's one person, and for all of Michigan, that's doing the investigation for people that are red flagged, so.
I'm sorry.
No, what?
And, and that's her, uh, true, there's Catherine, and she's the only investigator. Um, she says it's, it's a major problem. Again, even people that, say you don't know the geographic area of, of the city, two cities, one. Um, you could be dequed from the FTO field training program because you can't get your orientation down just because of that red flag. So he had a couple, um, policy violations that wasn't ethical, it wasn't a character thing, it was just a couple of policy violations. So we're still hireable, the director, he said that he was waiting for Catherine to get them a bit, and I contacted airborne chief, a team. He's also on the commission of ECO, and asked him if he could help out. We had contacted Catherine and tried to get him a little bit more about this tech. Um, but during the time that he was here, he was instrumental with helping out, with the training bureau, um, part of EMS, and part of assigned, that's head. Um, with the anticipation of ECO's passing it. ECO doesn't give you the reason why they didn't pass him, they just say they didn't pass him. Under normal circumstances, somebody that's certified doesn't have an ethical problem, it passes. So, uh, it's not the first red flag hired that was hired, he's the first that didn't pass.
Is it kind of on the same line? Oh, so why would we give him a front law if he's originally under those technicals?
Um, that's for the contract, that's, that's the only thing I can think of. So, I mean, that, that's where, um, it's just... Per the policy procedure, he is still paying union dues, so therefore, or under union contract, that's policy procedure, but he's still paying union dues. Um, he's still sworn. His license is put back to date. So with him being here for six months, he's still paying union dues, he's still under the union.
And it's probably, it's gonna, it would be usually given every few years, but it could, uh, very, very rare.
Through the chair?
Yes, floor recognizes Dr. Truck. Um, I have one other question. Um, prior, when we were discussing uniforms and the department paying for them, you had made a statement that if anyone left in the first year, any uniforms that were paid for by the city, um, would be turned back in. Did, he had six hundred dollars in uniforms paid out by the city. Were those turned back in?
Can we get his uniform?
Yes, I collect them, actually.
We can get his uniform.
So?
Um, basically, what chief is saying, um, so all his uniforms got collected back, um, and are actually, could be utilized for one of the new recruits. So they don't want to waste on a bulletproof vest, and basically it's gonna be utilized, so we didn't give them back.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Through the chair?
Yes, floor recognizes Slim Awali.
What happens if you don't get paid?
Um, he files a grievance against the city.
Exactly. Chief is basically saying, they had to, they hired him during a time where they're in desperate need for officers.
Yes.
Obviously, you know, and I did ask about the, the, um, flag officers that go and get recruited, and it's true. Sometimes, you know, depending on what the offense or what the case is. Um, in this case, it was just basically like a, a little situation between, you know, like the, you know, employee and the supervisor, so, um, they waited on that to get approved and visited. But at this point, you know, the guy already worked, the guy already, you know, had a contract, and he needs to get paid. Through the chair?
Through the chair? Floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
So, what is your, the capital cost it's gonna take in order to garnish from this?
That, that's the problem, because when, he was red flagged and they said they'd contact him. So I contacted ECO, I contacted Catherine, again, she's the only one that's working. Um, I said, so, what's the normal procedure because he's red flagged? And I sent her the background packet that, that I had, that, again, is ECO's regulated. I sent all the documentation, I actually sent all the write-ups and everything that, that he had, um, which I'm not gonna speak further detail because it's discipline. Um, so, I gave everything to, to her. Uh, a few weeks later, I don't know, maybe a month later, she had contacted me, she said, go ahead and swear in. So I'm thinking, okay, well, so let's form him in. Once he's sworn in, now, now he's an employee of Melvin Department. So I had to send that swear-in to her so then she could continue the process. So I, I, at this time, I don't know how to fix that, because that's something that ECO does, that I can talk to him, which I've done in the past and try to figure out, it's like, there's... My problem is, is, again, if you're a new recruit and you get hired on with a bigger agency, um, it's that much harder for us to wait until that person's cleared because they have a red flag. And like I said, to be simple as, I didn't learn the streets fast enough, the result, they got rid of you, that's a red flag. So it's, it's, when you have simple policy violations and that becomes a red flag, you're thinking, oh, this is, again, it's not an ethical issue, it's not an integrity issue, it's, it's policy violations. So that's where, I only followed with the recommendation from Catherine, as, as far as the, the hiring process that ECO requires.
This is policy violations from the prior, prior to he working?
Yes.
So, so you guys want to contact prior?
Oh, no, we did, that's how we got the policy violation. Um, we got everything in detail, exactly what it was, and that's where we had sent that to Catherine. And there wasn't anything out of the norm. I was forced to swear him in. I did.
And ECO's, ECO's like, yeah.
And then that's when, five months later, six months later, after he was sworn in, they denied to reactivate his license. So that's, that's, again, it's a problem because now police agencies, anybody that's red flagged, it's hard to process them as far, it's something that's simple. Obviously, we know if it's ethically wrong, or if there's an integrity issue, a trust issue, a little passive background, again. But when you have people that do pass the background, that are red flagged for simple things, then that becomes an issue when ultimately ECO turns them down after they tell them, lawyer, go ahead and swear him in, it's good. So that's how this happens, that's where the thing is.
Through the chair?
Yes, floor recognizes, with Marcy?
Uh, this is why, um, you need to have that workshop on civil service. Place decision, chief, should not have pressed, just on you, I don't know that you're doing a hiring fire. The problem is, is that with that, I look at this situation, this gentleman doesn't have a job now, okay? And if he finds any fault with our civil service or our hiring process, he can come back on us as well, even after he's let go. So, we're gonna have to come up with a hybrid situation, or we're gonna have to come up with, we're using civil service to generate our list, and then from that, making decisions like this, you know, because that was, that was a judgment call. He said, if she told you, said swearing in, and the civil service as a body, would have looked at that and said, okay, well, we know that she's standing, swearing in, what's going on in the safety? He's got X, Y, and Z, and they're allowed to see that information, if you're fucking wrong.
Are they allowed? You see that information? That's a discipline issue. That's the, that's the department records to where it's a discipline issue, that's not FOIA, it's not, it's not permanent information to civilians.
We'll have to check that out, and that'll be on the workshop.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Through the chair?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Okay, the floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
You tell me that, the municipality that's about to hire that person is not, is not purty to that?
We are. As a law enforcement agency, as a city, civilian is not acceptable to civilians.
That's why we're the problem, that's why we're the issue, they have the problem, that's the problem for us. Cause the citizens who are end up paying for that, that employee, that should.
Well, it's just, we need to get together so I can, yeah, come see, with, with your team, I might get, get that for you.
All right, yes. Floor recognizes Stan Filipowski.
I have two quick questions, so, if he's red flagged, if whoever's red flagged, okay, so ECO calls you and says, okay, well, do they know right off the rip? Say, okay, no, this guy's bad, or just whatever it is? So they say, go ahead and swear him in, and then they pay both keeper and, I would say, red flag rate is a little bit...
I think, and if that's where, you know, I, I mean, I'm trying to figure him in regards to this one, it's a problem, because, again, people that don't pass the FTO program, it's not the individual, it's just they didn't learn fast enough. Or there might be an agency that, that is so strict with the FTO program, they kick them out. And then we get to the problem here, so I'm sending, you know, a stack of paperwork like this for them to review. So, I think there's, there's, there's definitely a problem with taking, like, all red flag in somebody. Um, I mean, I guess, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna swear him in.
Keep your eye out. So it's like, okay, oh, chief, if you have a red flag, if you, if you want him, then we'll, we'll, that would've been a simple thing.
Yeah.
And then, you wouldn't need to spy.
Exactly.
And my second question, um, does this person have law to issue, uh, whether?
Yes. We got every, oh, we got, anything that was department issue would have that.
Okay, I suppose.
Yeah, no, it's just, I believe the department would have given that.
Just to, sorry, just to clarify, there was no department issue, doggo?
Yeah, we didn't give them down, because that need department issue equipment. So it didn't happen.
Can I call the vote? Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
No.
All right, okay, all right. Porcution Council?
Uh, we're going to close session to talk about contractual negotiations in town, Alphorn, and the PGI.
Are we voting?
I disagree.
Okay, so then we have to, now, any other motion to adjourn into closed session at eight forty-five?
So moved?
Support? Moved by Filipowski, supported by Cartridge, call the vote please. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
All right. Show us then?
Yeah, it's doing like a team, a team visit to church. Look, they're gonna be like me.
My daughter, she is going away for the army, they're taking her Sunday, and she's gonna be gone for six months. I'm trying to figure out what I'm gonna do with her car, so she don't get taken, and I don't mean her down the street.
How do we talk about your parents?
It's, there's not enough room. She's got enough room to put her in. I was hoping because of her, you know, certain, that there might be, because she's getting shipped out.
We will be here.
Sunday. They have her going to buses on Sunday, and then the buses picking them up on, uh, five o'clock in the morning.
Whether it's logical, I believe she thinks she's following.
But nobody knows.
I don't know, I saw you, but I don't think I accepted.
Tried to message me somehow, how, how, what, I guess, you don't know how, so.
Tomorrow's Thursday.
See me Friday.
Friday?
I'll figure it out.
This is, you know, different life.
Yeah.
I should play that, too, okay?
There you go.
We've gotten too much.
Yeah.
And this is his little brother.
What's he doing?
Yeah.
What's he doing?
This is Officer Hatch. So Officer Hatch, he was Elijah, Elijah.
So see, see me, uh, Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
We would have hired him, wait and see, but we were, we were slaying that FTO, so we were like, give us some time. We would have hired him sooner, but we were like, oh, can you wait until like at least June so we can get FTO breaks? That's the one reason.
Well, you only got one person, like, that's taking all the stuff.
So I'm gonna show you where that is?
Yeah.
We don't have a bicycle program, but we do work with, um...
But you were saying, basically, there's no password.
If you wanna know it, so every school year, we give them, um, backpacks, bikes, and, um, basketball, whatever.
I got some, I got some bicycle clips.
I'm cleaning out my backyard.
There you go, there you go.
At this point, if they say no, it's great. This is the most civil, uh, council meeting in our private area, like. Left can't get over, right can't move forward. Somebody, somebody dropped a ball.
This is not just, like, this, a city, because they have a national, you know, they have all these people at Crayway, um, medical school, that publish in the band, that are medical doctors, because they're common, if you see them now, they're gonna be common.
I'd love it to be, I'm pretty lucky, and a lot of, um, a lot of people. And I always want my doctor to have his vacation, he's an operator, he's sad if something happens, you know?
What you're saying is true, it's not just happening here because he came from other org, it's happening all over, not just here, so somebody's gotta do something.
They need to, yes, go to calling place, and it's, and I don't understand why state and mature.
That's what they should, because it's, because it's a same exam, it's a most of the seasons.
Since you do all the research in another state, you have some, some, you know. That's what I thought, I wanted to go, what they're saying there was, or what there wasn't, you know, so, so what, so when this happens, then what, you know?
It's several, they did it in any state that they passed, I think, you could say, working here. I think I could say, I think I could say, it'd be crazy to be paid.
Is everybody ready? Alright, you good? Alright, I'm looking for a motion to reclaim at eight fifty-three.
Go move, support.
Moved by Marcy, supported by Filipowski, call the vote please. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to, uh, direct the seat of counsel for the jury, to have a, uh, PGI, to direct mayor, or have the press mayor decide the path that.
So moved. Moved by Cartridge, supported by Filipowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Car, sorry, Cartridge?
Yes.
And I'm looking for a motion now to maintain, continue to retain, I should say, Collins and Alhorn, uh, to represent us on the litigation of, now, the state court, which we already won in the federal. So I'm gonna say, they were looking for a campaign of ten thousand dollars.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Marcy. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
I have no further agreement, thank you very much. Uh, if you wanna do a waiver of seven day as to the PCIG, we could do that, that'd be great. Audience, yourself.
Support.
Want to have a motion, do I, oh, you make the motion? Okay, so we're doing a seven day waiver, um, are we doing it on both?
The council, yeah, that'd be great.
So what seven day waiver is this for?
Both, both of them.
You can't do them together, just separate.
Let's do, uh, PCIG version.
Are you good with that? So it was moved by Jackson, supported by Filipowski?
Nope.
Call the vote please. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
Alright, I'm also looking for a motion to waive the seven day period for Collins and Alhorn, Daryl?
Go move.
Moved by Marcy, supported by Jackson. Call the vote please. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
There you go. Alright, treasure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So moved.
Moved by Filipowski, supported by Jackson. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Cartridge?
Yes.
Alright, at this time, it's audience participation, if you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Um, I'm good.
Um, so a few things. July twentieth, I'm inviting, uh, everybody out to the field house, we're doing a one-year, uh, memorial slash community event for Corporal Said. Um, we're actually organizing it, uh, me and a few other people that will, uh, be announced at the, uh, end of this, uh, memorial. It's gonna be a bunch of fun activities, um, I know, it's gonna be a helicopter landing, that's pretty big. So, uh, I know, I wanna get that done, um, that's actually something my brothers in the works are doing. There'll also be, uh, a trooper flyover, and then a helicopter landing in, uh, the field house park. That's what I told Tennessee engineer, not in the park, uh, I'm sorry. I gotta make sure those give, right? Uh, so that's July twentieth, if I could write that down.
Do you have a time yet?
Uh, yes, two to five.
Two to five?
Two to five. There's also, uh, a couple hundred motors that are riding out from Rhine Drive, past the memorial, past the gravesite, past the car wash, past Corporal Said's house, and straight to the field house. So you're looking at two hundred fifty-plus motors, um, that's, a couple of bike clubs, uh, Mr. Frederick also is invited for his bike club, um. Bunch of agencies that have, uh, motors, they'll, they'll also be out there, Detroit Traffic Union will be closing all these, uh. It's a big community event that we wanna make, 'cause obviously give up the community, and we wanna bring everybody closer. There'll be food, basketball rims, bouncy houses, uh, MSP will be out there, and just, it's just gonna be a big, great event. So, fire will be made for the community also, but this is like a pre-invitation, so you guys are special. Uh, one other thing, I'm sure you guys are following, I'm, I'm sure you guys see on social media, uh, we'll call it the bird, 'cause it flocks. So we'll call it the bird, thank you for approving that. Uh, I'm sure you guys seen the last post on the Melvindale PD page, um, there was a, uh, stolen vehicle that entered our city, and it was stolen out of a vehicle park. Entered our city, um, that vehicle was found in front of the residence, uh, in, uh, on Clear End Street, just a few houses down from where Said passed away. Uh, that vehicle was parked in front of a residence, we were locating it and watching the vehicle at the same time. We don't know if that person or whoever was in that vehicle was trying to do anything to a home nearby or another vehicle. Obviously, it's a felony, and it's already a felony, uh, as hinting that you were a car vehicle. And we ended up initiating a stop, and then he took off. Obviously, you know, we're watching out for the community and everything else going on, terminated the chase, and the vehicle was later located in a, in a backyard of a residence in the city of Atlanta. Uh, without the help of, uh, the birds, um, if something were to happen in our city in broad daylight, in the evening, or the kids are outside, and all that stuff is going on, so thank you for that. Um, and then, other than that, nothing else, July twentieth, be there, please.
For sure, thank you so much. Anyone else? Good evening.
Karen Parker, twenty-eight oh one, through Harmon Street. So, as you guys know, Parks and Rec, next Thursday, June twenty-sixth, Parks and Music in the Park. Box. Parks and Rec is gonna ask a favor of all you guys. Karen, you don't have to, uh, it's just what you do. Uh, so we wanna raise money for Parks and Rec, right? So we wanna keep this going, and we gotta do little by little, and I don't think it's gonna be a huge turnout this year, but we wanna keep things going. So we were thinking, again, a don tank, and people can pay, and maybe you guys, everybody up here. You know, everybody's on here, nobody's spending money, but we can make so much money. Because that's what we, it's all Parks and Rec that came up with this, so, I guess it's, first of all, it's gonna be on the, uh, uh, what? Idea? Think about it, guys.
I think it's a great idea.
Um, this, the, okay, the don tank would be September sixth.
Oh, that, that's not cold.
How are you, you guys all do, you won't be in the, that, you won't, it won't be that long, but just think of. I mean, all of you guys, everybody's got, oh, you too, Larry, go ahead.
And there's a football game in there.
You know, you got to bag.
You know. So, but yeah, so, and like I said, you know, all of our best, but no, I'm serious, so I'll think about it, you know? Uh, or else we could run one for maybe the July or August, I think we could get more money on September sixth, 'cause there's a lot of water. Um, and what Officer Hatcham was saying, there's also gonna be a soccer tournament from five thirty to seven. Seven, there'll be trophies too, um, just one game.
Is that Corporal Said's soccer tournament?
It's gonna be one game, it's gonna be Corporal Said's youth team against M. J. youth team.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what, what time?
That, the soccer is from like five thirty, so like, it's only a game, yeah, and then there's gonna be trophies afterwards, so. Oh, you're the first in the don tank, okay, you're gonna fill out the spots more than I am. But, that's an idea, so you guys all think about it. Oh, and this young man here, he was at a public safety meeting, and I think everybody's, this is a great meeting tonight, I wish everyone would be like this. And this young man, look, he, he loves this stuff, but yeah, I'm gonna give you this flyer, okay? Alright.
Anyone else, is the audience participation?
How you guys doing? It's nice to see you expecting a council, it's really unusual, you say that to the chair, and you say his name, and blah, blah, this is really organized, and then you had a speech with the, the chief about, hey, shut up back there and keep it cool. You know, that's, uh, civilized, uh, city council meetings, which we really haven't had, you know? It's, it's a very good beginning. I've just got a couple of questions here, when we were talking about the Robert, uh, project or something, how many houses were they gonna build on that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I was wondering if it's justified, patients spend three hundred thirty thousand dollars, but, and that'll be obviously more income, and they're probably two hundred thousand dollar homes, so it's a, it's a kind of a cost for to pay them off, kind of to get that money back, that's, that's one of my questions. Okay, uh, obviously, that John guy, you have to pay him off, because there's another squabble. Uh, so, you have that demolition on Harmon Street, and usually, you know, demolition costs fifteen, twenty, probably twenty thousand now, it's demo it. You guys should have a little bidding thing on that, or if somebody wants to build a house there, that they pay the cost for demolition on that house, and, and they get the land for the demolition, because you guys are tearing away land for fifteen thousand dollars on lots and stuff, and lots around here should be more than that. And if you do a demolition, let's say for twenty thousand, maybe more now, that, you're gonna lose money, the best way not to lose money in the city is to put it in, who wants to do bids on heaven, and all they have to do is dem- demolish that building, that building, and then, they owned the lot, because they took care of all that, and they can put their house on it, because a lot of people wanna put new houses on, and then the city wouldn't have to pay nothing for a demolition, because the person who demos it, that's his property now, instead of saying, oh, you only got to get fifteen thousand, it costs us twenty-five thousand to knock it down, they'll save ten thousand dollars, it's common sense, you guys are really commonsensical now. The, the way to make money is let them do it, and then we'll have a tax base, their, their house will be bigger, they'll give us more tax money, and then we won't have to worry about the demolition, because it'll be the responsibility of the owner who bids on that property to pay for the demolition, to, to put his house on, you got that right now. And that would eliminate all of it, to save us money, just in case it goes too much over, and we're only, we don't get fifteen thousand dollars for it, don't make no damn sense. You, you, you let them do it, and we don't pay jacky, and, and then, uh, you know, I was gonna say the S-word, but we don't pay that, and, and we get rid of that light, and we bring in a nice house with the taxes, and we don't lose nothing. That'd be beautiful, wouldn't it be? And I'd like to, since I don't got five minutes, wow. Uh, Zon is great, I, I appreciate Zon, uh, with, with her knowledge, you guys always go to her for statistics and stuff, and she don't get appreciated a lot, and I, I, I like to say, thank you, Zon, for your factual stuff, and you don't get praised enough to get rebellion against you at times, but you're a good woman.
Okay.
And I'm glad you're on the council, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, everybody else is doing good, uh, he made a good point, uh, Dula, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. That you said about, yeah, we're gonna go and, he started going litigation, we might as well get rid of the problem, let's go, and everybody voted stuff for her, but that's good, because she has her opinion, like I've always said, it's your opinion, it doesn't really matter, and that was good. And, and, and Joe, let's try not to pick on him so much, because he's, he's a good guy, when I seen him at that veterans' thing, the Marine, and all the stuff he did for the veterans' memorial thing, how, how can I go wrong with a patriotic guy like that? Because I'm a patriotic guy, I'm a constitutional guy, and I appreciate him, even though everybody picks on him, but he, and then the beautification thing I saw, doing it by himself, he's, he's for the city, no matter what a lot of people think, and he's, 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 he's a good man. And every place, a good person, you know, I might have some grudges against you people from when I walk out, and I come back in, I'm your friend again, until I get the grudge again, and then you're my enemy for a week, and I'll come back again, and I, you'll be my friend again, and that's the way a council should be. Enemy, come back two weeks late, friend, and start all over again, and be, be coherent, and let's get these lawsuits out of here, because we can't afford it, and we don't need no more. And, oh, and that, I did watch that tape, somebody did it on that little, uh, Melvindale thing, the tape of Furman shooting the gun at a black, uh, lady, and he says, oh, he's threatening, how are you gonna be threatening with a, a black lady sitting in the car, and you're shocking her two or three times?
There's pending litigation on that, we cannot talk about that.
Yeah, don't matter, but.
No, we cannot talk about that.
Okay, but I, I think that's wrong, we shouldn't hire nobody that does it, and, 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 he, there's no threat against them, that's all I'm saying, there's no threat.
Anyone else? Seeing none, moving on. Alright. Council members, Mayor Proton.
Good evening. I was talking to this microphone, but hell, it's dead.
Need an upgrade, Rich.
Um, I was gonna go over a couple of things tonight, but this, this has been so cordial tonight, and, uh, it's been very low-key and very respectful. Um, and I wanna keep it that way, um, I still, there's still some things that has to be addressed, and the last council meeting we had was fairly ugly, shouldn't have played out like that, in, uh, in the public, as it has done a couple of times. We, uh, I think there's a misunderstanding of how these council meetings are supposed to go. As the chief already touched on. There, there isn't to be any outburst from the audience in any way, shape, or form, even when it comes to, uh, applause, applause is supposed to be for when you do a presentation or beforehand. It's considered, it's considered disruptive to the meeting. One thing that is looked over is that the mayor chairs, she chairs the meeting, but if the council sees that she is failing, she controlled the meeting, then it's actually the council's duty to step in and say something. So I think it was a misunderstanding between, I think she thought I was telling her to do her job. I was making her aware of what was going on, at times, I think she picked some shoes, but, like I said, I'm not trying to pick any fights tonight. I just think we have a better understanding later on, as we go forward. Um, and, uh, that being said, uh, this, I think Melvindale days went off good, uh, state police did well, Melvindale police did well, uh, uh, sheriff did well, Black Diamond Security. Um, and, uh, that being said, uh, this, I think Melvindale days went off good, uh, state police did well, Melvindale police did well, uh, uh, sheriff did well, Black Diamond Security, I think you guys did well as well. Um, and apparently we had some good numbers, right?
We did have some good numbers, uh, she's sick tonight.
Still just portion.
Uh, I was asking.
No, it's still your portion.
Okay, uh, yeah, we had some big numbers, everything went, went out without a hitch, and I think everybody did a great job. Um, I love to, uh, wish everyone who celebrates it, it's mostly for the black community, but it's for everyone, yeah, Juneteenth, a new, a newer holiday for most people in the world, but look into it, it'd be, it'd be interesting for you. Um, and, uh, once again, I just hope we can get, uh, a little bit, we've already, we've said this before, you know, we get that reset buttons.
Yeah.
I hope we get some real good reset buttons, I'm looking forward to meeting with the chief to address some of the things that we need to talk about. And, uh, and you said.
All right, Mayor, or Mayor, State Council President.
Um, just wanna say it's a good idea, Joe, I, I spent a couple hours with the chief today, go over, uh, you know, a lot of things, I recommend everybody to do the same, um, it's healthy. Um, Karen is making me remind you guys about next Thursday, July twenty-sixth, music in the park, sixty-nine food trucks, music, all, all kinds of stuff, so make sure you show up, it's a great community event. I think they're doing a great job, and it's gonna be something amazing.
It's June twenty-sixth? Gonna have nobody there.
Is it June or July?
June twenty-sixth.
June?
July twenty-fourth.
I have the proof you said in July. It's June, sorry, June, yes, June, yes, it's right here.
There you go.
Yep.
We can post one of these on the board out there, so that people can know when it actually is. Anything else? All right. Philip, how's you?
Uh, yes, just a couple of quick things, and that's at Langford Park too, just to let everybody know, you didn't say that.
I did it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How about this? Do it next time, we were good.
Um, I had the opportunity to stop by the pool the other day, um, the lifeguards were doing their job, um, they end up kicking about eight kids out at one time, they were acting up. Um, I think that they, they had like sixty kids signed up inside the pool at the time that I was there, uh, which was probably early afternoon, so I'm like, okay, there's, there's people using it, that's good. Um, a lot of families, uh, a lot of younger kids, which is nice also, but the, the lifeguards, they had their hands full, and they, it was just before I got there, and they, they handled their job, and they, uh, removed the kids that were being a problem, they gave them a warning, and after that, they were out, so, which is what they're supposed to do, the rules are posted everywhere. Um, I don't think they ever have an issue with some people not wearing the proper, um, bathing uniform or, or suits or whatever you wanna call them, um, so that's, that was, what they're correcting that before they even go in. So, um, again, I, it was, it was nice to see that the pool is open and being used, so, um, other than that, man, I got nothing else.
All right, RC?
Um, I'm just gonna touch base and let everybody, I'm not gonna tell you the numbers, but we had the best Melvindale days, as far as finances go in the history of Melvindale days. And we get to, uh, mess with Laura when we do that, Laura Barbosa, uh, she did it for years, she was the director here, so it's kind of a running joke, and we had a good one a couple of years ago, right after COVID. And this one topped that by a bunch, I'm not gonna kill her, I'm not gonna kill her thunder, I wanna talk about it, she's, uh, she's down for town for a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, Kresha?
Um, the only thing I have this evening are the uniform invoices that were put back on the invoice list. Um, two new hires, one is B Ahmed.
So, Beshar?
Um, I don't have first names, I have first initials. Um, hire date was January tenth, twenty twenty-four, when he started the academy. In, um, July of last year, he was purchased by the city from the invoice that I have, seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-six cents worth of uniforms. That was last July, in Ju-, in December of this year, before he went to the academy, he was purchased, two invoices totaling eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents in uniforms. I now have three additional invoices that have not been paid yet, totaling nine hundred and sixty dollars. The total for all of these invoices, including a hundred and fifty-six ninety-nine, which I'm assuming were long sleeve shirts for when he was the ordinance officer, um, totaled twenty-five hundred and eighty dollars. This well exceeds the twelve hundred dollar allowance for uniforms, which is why I pulled the invoices. That's one, the other one is M, first name M Ahmed. Hire date was one-ten to the academy again, uniform allowance twelve hundred dollars. Um, in December, before going to the police academy, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents was billed to the city for uniforms on two separate invoices, which were paid. In April, there were an additional five invoices billed to the city totaling eleven hundred and thirty-nine eighty-one. Last week, or two weeks ago, uh, Chief Canaly handed us all a, I guess it would be a statement, because it includes these five invoices, plus two more that are missing. For a total of twenty-one hundred and eighty-two sixty-five since December, with a twelve hundred dollar uniform allowance. This is why all these invoices were pulled and not paid.
Chief, you wanna?
There's a lot of invoices that are duplicates, there are things that are being bought that we shouldn't be paying for, I've got some other uniform invoices. Um, I've got an ordinance officer that purchased in November, December, January, something like that, uh, I've got it here. Um, a pair of boots, billed them to the city for a hundred and forty-five dollars. Just got another invoice billed to the city for another pair of boots for a hundred and ninety dollars. There are things on here that when you're an ordinance officer, you should not be buying. Um, I've got another ordinance officer, we're buying them holsters, um, magazine holders, handcuff cases, those aren't things ordinance officers need. That is why I pulled a lot of these invoices, you can't just go by the invoices that were just sent in, you have to go back and look at all of them, since they seem to be coming in, two hundred dollars here, two hundred dollars here, three hundred dollars here. One of the invoices were for two coats, for a part-time seasonal ordinance officer, two coats, three hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred and fifteen ninety-eight, for two coats. For a part-time seasonal ordinance officer, for a, this is the resolution from the Safety Commission, resolution number right here, uh, twenty-one dash eight dash O six, moved by Hall, supported by McDaniel, to allow the Public Safety Commission to hire a second part-time ordinance officer for the months from March through September. That's it, that's all I have for tonight.
Do you wanna address that?
So there's a, there's a couple of things, I, with, uh, Beshar, uh, we, the city approved, um, for Corporal Sykes', um, funeral, for them to be in Class A uniforms, that's why he was, um, got those Class A uniforms.
Who? Beshar. Who decided that the entire police department would be bought new uniforms for a funeral?
I did, because the chief and I decided that we don't want our officers looking like.
Or they're supposed to, for their uniforms, they are already supposed to have Class A uniforms. They, I'm looking at all the invoices, and they're buying things they're already supposed to have, new holster, a hundred and eighty dollars for a new holster, you're already supposed to have a holster, that's part of your uniform. New handcuff holders, all kinds of shit that was billed in this.
Watch your language, watch your language.
Pardon our language, I'm sorry, I apologize, all kinds of things that they are already supposed to have, that were bought new, but they're supposed to already have them.
I believe this is also a contractual thing, in the contract, when, uh, a new officer is hired, they, it does stay in there that they, the city does pay for guns, holsters, nightsticks, uh, uh, all the necessary equipment, that's the contractual, that the city is supposed to pay for.
I'm talking about all these, these are things that they already have, these are existing officers. I've got every officer for the last year and a half, and every invoice.
We're gonna do a workshop and go over these invoices, because it's gonna be very hard to sort it out right here, and she's saying all these numbers, and they're not matching what I have, so.
Well, I have copies of everything and every.
Like I said, we'll do a workshop, um.
We'll bring the contract here that states that workshop.
Can we do, um, can we do six PM on Wednesday, June, July second? Would be prior to the meeting?
Um, prior to the, which July meeting, no, it would need to be before that.
Okay, so.
And probably it'll be a little later in the day, I think you said seven now.
The vendors are also getting paid too.
No, I know, this is a huge issue, so when we don't have those vendors to go to, then we can pay more to the company in Troy, it's just gonna cost the city more money.
This, this is the other thing too, um, getting copies of the invoices that are in question, so we can research ourselves and figure out why they were issued. The boot, absolutely wrong, I agree a hundred percent with you, that is not part of the uniform, that is not something that I allow, I don't know.
That was for an ordinance officer, not even a police officer.
Shouldn't have done it, should not have done it, do I know about it? No, I didn't, is my signature on it?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, then that's an oversight.
Well, one, one was you, I, I could be mistaken, one could be you, and one could be Deputy Chief Martinez, but.
Okay, and that's just where, we'll, we'll look at, but that's where, again.
We shouldn't have people go into these uniform companies and buying whatever they want and sending the bills to the city.
Correct.
So we need to stop that track billing.
Yeah, well, it's the same thing with the O'Reilly's, I'm, I'm giving invoices from O'Reilly's to where, what's a thirty-four dollar purchase, what's, what, you know, a seven dollar purchase, that all adds up, and so I'm trying to figure out where that's coming from. What you do need to buy on the city's dime for that, so, most definitely, but again, I need the officer to see these invoices, so then I can.
I think that you all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll research them along with you, so then I can be prepared for the workshop as well, and then we can work together on resolving this.
All right.
Not a problem, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
I won't have time right before the meeting to do it, so it would need to be a different day, is that?
Definitely later time.
Because I'm thinking it's probably gonna take longer than what we're expecting, and then I need to be prepared for the meeting.
So. Can we do June thirtieth?
Yeah, we can.
Or we can even do the twenty-third. June thirtieth, what time?
Do you want to do the thirtieth?
Work, these guys for work.
It'll have to be, yeah, six thirty, twenty-six, thirty-seven.
What's your set at seven? Are we doing it here or at the fieldhouse?
It's June thirtieth, it's seven PM.
Mm-hmm. Are we doing it here or at the fieldhouse?
If it's, oh, we'll do here, huh?
Okay, we're gonna do here.
Actually, cool, here.
All right, so we have workshop, seven PM, council chambers, I'm gonna need to post a, um, thing in the paper, letting everybody know it has to be posted in three locations, here, the fieldhouse, and the library. Um, for workshop, yes. Um, it also needs to be posted online too.
June thirtieth at seven.
PM, here in the council chambers. Are you finished?
Oh, I am, I'm sorry, okay, I was making sure I put it in my calendar, so.
All right, so I have a few things, um, well, I think that Melvindale days went off without a hitch, um, there wasn't, um, a whole lot of problems, um. I was a little disappointed when we originally discussed having Black Diamond, uh, with data in the company, that it was supposed to be apples to apples and oranges to oranges, um, that is not what we received. Um, it was supposed to be armed security, um, I seen, I, I, I don't know about the whole weekend, I was only there on Sunday, but I seen two officers, neither of which were armed. Um, one of the gentlemen was behind the fieldhouse smoking, um, a rather not approached him, asked him if he was on, on duty, or if he was on break, he said he was on duty, and he said, I don't think it's very appropriate for you to be back here smoking. You're supposed to be out maintaining the crowd, making sure everything runs smoothly, um, and I just didn't see that, I'm not saying that code three was the better choice, I just didn't care for Black Diamond. Um, the other thing I have, um, last, uh, council meeting was a disaster. Um, the lack of decorum falls not only on the council, but it was also the, the people that were here for the meeting. Um, for this body, lack of decorum is a charter violation. Um, I appreciate the respectfulness tonight, I want to see that continue. Um, because if not, then I'm gonna have to take action against it. Um, the other thing, um, I received an email after the last meeting from a council member. And, um, I just want to address a couple of things. Um, actually, no, I'm gonna read this into the record, so let the record reflect. Um, it says to all, I wanted to take a moment to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding last night's council meeting. I left feelings, I left feeling absolutely devastated by the level of disrespect shown not only to me, but to several other council members as well. The increasingly rigid structure of our meeting has become counterproductive, the tone is set by the chair, and unfortunately, last night, that tone stifled open dialogue. Being interrupted, silenced, or discouraged from speaking undermines the purpose of the meeting entirely. We are elected to discuss, debate, and to serve the community through constructive dialogue, not to be shut down. It is equally troubling that last night's atmosphere became so volatile, the crowd's outburst was alarming and frankly dangerous, and I'm generally, generally concerned that if this narrative continues unchecked, someone could get seriously, seriously hurt. It was unclear, it was clear that we lacked the necessary measures to deescalate or control the situation effectively. Additionally, I would like the meeting's audio review, I believe I heard the mayor say the individual behind the Facebook post that sparked this outrage was a real person and her cousin. I hope I misheard, to be honest, I was shaken and experiencing a flight response at the time, most disturbing, most disturbing of all, the majority of the audience, many of whom are city personnel or police officers, seemed to be acting on a shared false belief that council was going to fire the chief. This information created unnecessary chaos, who started and spread this message, this is a serious question that must be answered. We should all be working together to promote and strengthen, strengthen Melvindale, not inflame division and provoke mob-like behavior, so, um. I just wanna address that not all of us up here are elected, and so if there was a flight or fight response, um, you are not obligated to be here, uh, that is a personal choice. And you did misunderstand or, or misheard, I stated that my cousin went to school with, um, Lucas Wilson, um, that he was in fact a real person and not Angela Garverall, so I just wanted to clear that up. So I just wanted to clear that up. Um, since I was elected and sworn in, there has been extreme disrespect, um, very little communication between all of this body and the lack thereof. Moving forward, we were elected to make the city better. We've been at this for eighteen months and we've done absolutely nothing for our community, nothing. We've argued a lot, um, and starting today and going forward, that is unacceptable. If you disagree, that's fine, but we're gonna do it in a respectful way. Um, the lack of communication, um, includes our corporation council and our city administrator and that's unacceptable. You guys were put into position, I am the mayor of this community and things need to be communicated. Um, I received an email, um, from Lisa Powell in regards to, um, a position that uh, was available for the clerk. I'm hoping that you all got a copy of her resume. Um, she is very qualified. Um, she is super excited and, um, I'm hoping that you guys will approve her as we need a clerk. Um, I don't know her personally, I've had a conversation with her in the hallway, she seems very intelligent. Um, so I'm asking for a motion to table the appointment of Lisa Pa- Lisa Powell for the clerk's position to fill the unexpired, it wouldn't be really expired if she was appointed to, to fulfill, um, the clerk's position.
So?
The vacancy, correct. Uh, so I believe it was Filipowski and Jackson is who had her first. Call and vote please. This is for a table.
Oh, this is taken.
Yes. Yeah. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Karsha? Yes. All right, we already went over the uncated invoices and we're gonna do a workshop, so we're now to a payment of approved bills.
I got you. I moved place on file the invoicing cover sheet and authorized the payment of the approved invoices totaling six hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Our electronic transfers totaling three hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Moved by Filipowski, supported by Jackson, I have discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Awali?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Karsha? Yes. Real quick, before I forgot to address this, so, um, Wayne Metro sent me an email stating that they're doing, uh, their free weatherization program again. Uh, this includes wall installation, attic installation or ventilation, floor foundation installation, air sealing measures for doors and windows and accesses, furnace tune-up or replacement, refrigerator replacement, other ener- energy saving measures such as light bulbs, dryer vents, et cetera. Um, Melvindale is included in this and there is a guideline for income, um, to be approval, for approval. So I will post this on the board in the hallway. If anybody's interested, please reach out to them. Um, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to.